Mobile County Regular Meeting, March 23, 2020. I think we have Commissioner Ludgood going to open us up with a word of prayer. And where did our American flag go?
Yep, there it is. And I will hold the flag.
This morning, we bow humbly before you, recognizing that you are an all-powerful God, an almighty God, and that no matter what the circumstances that prevail, that you are ultimately in charge, and that you're working it out for our good. Father, we ask that as we deliberate this morning, that you give us wisdom in all that we undertake. We ask that you give us a generous heart, and that you give us just the spirit of hope so that we can, while we take the precautions we need to, that we can always act in a spirit of optimism. Father, we ask that you bless everyone, under the sound of my voice, everyone, everywhere in this nation, in this world, and let us always forget that we are stronger together than we are apart. In this, we ask, we ask in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a lot to cover this morning, so let's jump right into it. Dana, we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have a open letter from Chicken Salad Chick franchise owner, Misty Whitehead. It'll be presented by Commissioner Hudson.
Morning, Commissioners. Ms. Whitehead asked that I read this letter. Given the circumstances of trying to eliminate having a large crowd today, she's decided to send a letter of communication. It reads, "I am writing this letter to ask that you consider deferring our monthly 10% payments. With portions of the Plaza and downtown closing, it has cut our business to 30% of what it was prior to the COVID-19 outbreak. I have four staff members that I would love to keep on the payroll as long as possible. As of today, I was able to make payroll for the last two weeks, but I'm assuming that sales will continue to decrease at our Plaza location. If the decrease continues, we may have to close this location down until the debilitating virus passes. Please let me know your thoughts. Thank you." What I would, what I would request and recommend in this case, she is asking for basically a deferment until her restaurant operations return to normal. And I would ask that we include a resolution in the form of a motion, I'll make the motion on the agenda for an add-on, that would basically defer her rental payments. This would amend the contract, the agreement that we have with Chicken Salad Chick, to defer payments until, for eight weeks, or until the point when restaurant services return to normal. I think it's the fair thing to do. I think these business owners are suffering all over, all over the country, and certainly here in, in our area as well. And even the federal government and the state are taking steps to try to help alleviate some of this suffering with federally backed home mortgages and deferment of payment on those and that sort of thing. So I, I think this is entirely appropriate as the landlord for this business.
Have a motion on the floor?
Are we, are we going to take it up now? Okay. Well, I'll make, I've made the motion, so.
Commissioner, I, I don't think it's going to pass simply because we understand what she's saying, and we sympathize with that. I'm speaking for myself, not we. But how do we, how do we do, treat her special than we do the other restaurants downtown? With, with her being here, she certainly is benefiting, and that's not, that's, I don't mean this negative way, but she's benefiting more because I've eaten my last five lunches here, because, mainly because I'm tied up with, with phone calls and conferences. But, you know, it, it's still an opportunity here. When you look at some of the other restaurants in town, it's zero.
Well, Commissioner, we're not the landlord for the other restaurants. I would hope, I would hope very much that whoever is the landlord, or whoever they pay their rental payments to, would take some sort of mercy on their current situation as well. Because if not, we're going to see many businesses closed that may never even reopen. And I think Chicken Salad Chick has provided a tremendous benefit to you and others at the Plaza right now, when, when, when food, when takeout is really all that's available as far as, is maybe taking food home to families, or to, if we're, since we have employees that are still working here, that, to be able to, to eat. So I think, we're not asking, she's not asking to waive any payments. She's just asking for it to be deferred until operations return to normal. She's down over 60% of her revenues, and she's trying to keep people on the job here to be able to work. And I think it's very little, I mean, we have, in, in terms of what we've, we've provided, right now, we're waiving all rental payments to the city of Mobile and subsidizing their utilities at, to the rate of a half a million dollars a year. If we can do that for the city of Mobile, surely we can waive payments, or we can defer payments, not waive payments, but defer them for a couple of months for Chicken Salad Chick until they can get on their feet. But I'm, I'm hoping that the other restaurants and the other businesses have, are working, that they'll be able to survive as well, and, and whoever they work with, or whoever their landlord is, I'm hoping that they will have mercy on them as well.
Okay. Their, their lease is based on what they sell, correct? So if they sell $1,000 worth a day, they owe $100 rent. So it's all based on what they sell, so if they don't sell anything, they owe nothing.
Well, they still have to pay staff.
Well, I, I've been in enough businesses, I understand that. I, I got that part. And, and they're preparing it off-site, and they're bringing it in, so it's a limited staff here. They're down to two. Last couple of times that I've been in there, they're down to two. And we, we don't need to argue this, I'm just saying it, it's a very delicate situation in that, that the county is going to help a business versus helping all the businesses. If I had a way of affecting all the businesses, I would say it was fair, and I would certainly do it. But this is based not on rental, but on sales dollars. It's not a set rate that she, they're paying, so we, it's a pretty good deal. It's a pretty good deal.
It's a good deal for the county with the, with the revenue that the county's brought in.
How much has the county brought in?
Well, she, we, I know one month, it was up to about, it was over $2,000. So she had done, but she's down 60%, and she's trying to maintain staff. And that's the thing, if she can't make payroll, they have to close the location. And so regardless of whether it's 10% or whatever, she still has to pay staff, and she's not being able to do that if this continues.
My thing to push back you're getting here is it's hard to do something for one person and not do it for everyone.
Well, like I said before, we're not the landlord for every other business downtown, but Chicken Salad Chick is in our building, and we are the landlord.
Okay. All right.
So I'm assuming, does it, so, so, does that die for lack of a second?
I would say it does. We can certainly take it up at a different time, but you don't have a certain order.
I'm not sure we have, I'm not sure she has any more time. I think that probably what she'll have to do is close the business.
Look, Commissioner Hudson, everybody's in this situation. Everybody's going to take a hit, everybody's got to suffer a little bit, including us, the county. We have to suffer. We, we can't, we can't, we can't show preference to people, and especially ourselves and people around us, when there are people that are truly hurting.
With all due respect, Commissioner, I don't see it, I don't see it in the same light that you do.
I mean, you've got single moms out there that only work for tips, and you're saying treat them different than you're treating somebody that's actually got a business in this building? I don't see that. I, I don't, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry. It dies. Let's move on. Who's next?
We have no other speakers, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the February 26, 2020, and March 9, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing, so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard.
I call the order, is anyone here to, to speak for or against the revenues expenditures? Okay.
Number four, approve appointment of Jackie Williams to serve as a member of the Board of Review for Mobile County Junk Control Ordinance, representing District 3 until its successor is appointed.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve contract with Sierra Land Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $10,000 from District 1 funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve contract with 100 Black Men of Greater Mobile, Inc., in the amount of $25,000 from District 1 funds to support its scholarship program.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve contract with Visualize Everyone That Serves in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve contract with Mobile Medical Museum in a total amount of $3,000 to be equally divided among District 1, District 2, and District 3 funds in the amount of $1,000 each to support student tours and educational programming.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve contract with Alabama Cooperative Extension System in the amount of $1,000 from District 3 funds to support its Mobile County Urban 4-H Animal Science Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve contract with Grand Bay Middle School Parent Teacher Organization in amount of $40,000 from District 3 funds for walkway canopies.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve amending to 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to add project estimated cost as follows, $30,000 renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama. This amendment creates project renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama, and also allocates $30,000 from District 1 unnamed projects to the CIP.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve amending 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to increase costs for project renovation of Davis Avenue Library from $40,071.52, and decrease 2019 CIP District 1 unnamed projects by $40,071.52.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve lease agreement between Mobile County and Grand Bay Union Athletic Association for the use of Odd Fellows Park, also known as Festival Park, commencing April 1st, 2020, and ending April 30th, 2020, with a month-to-month option to renew.
May I make an observation here? Why don't we go ahead and do 90 days on this? Because we, with all the, all the things we have going on dealing with this every month for the next three months, I think it's really unuseful. So can we change that April date to maybe July, or June? You see any reason why we couldn't, Doug?
No, really, they wouldn't even be able to get in and play it probably until the end of April, beginning of May.
Okay, so April, May, June. Can we make it June the 30th then, through June the 30th? Any objection?
No.
Okay. I could, let's change that to ending June the 30th, 2020. There's no objections? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve renewal of annual maintenance agreement with Elite, a Thompson Reuters business for Mobile County Attorney's Office, for $1,0786.88 for the term May 1, 2020 to April 30, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve cost for the Alabama primary runoff election to be held July 14, 2020, for the total amount of $274,527.50 as follow.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve annual service rating of county engineer W. Brian Kelly II.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve annual service rating of Public Works Director and Chief Engineer of Division of Public Roads, Richard A. Mitchell.
So moved.
Second.
And one observation, number 16, there is another Brian Kegley that's an engineer that's here in town. What's the odds of that? I met him the other night at a dinner. Don't, don't say it. I sent a picture to Brian, he didn't believe it.
He says, "Also."
There you go.
I don't know about that "also" part.
Number, number 18, approve application of Eminence Promotion LLC for special events retail liquor license for Southeastern Combat Championship, District 3.
Did we confirm if they were still going through with that or not? So my understanding, they'll pay a fee for this one, and if they change it to another one, they'll have to pay a second fee, right? Their money. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve application for SWAM LLC for off-premise retail beer and table wine license for District 2.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the licensed Commissioner's Office to dispose of certain items.
So moved.
Second.
21, approve assignment to Mott McDonald for renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street for professional services associated with the Design, Bidding, and Construction Administration in amount of $30,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve change order number for CP 2018-005, Chico's Bowl Park Administration Building and Americans with Disabilities Act upgrades with Thomas Institute, Inc. The change will increase the contract by $19,286.45 to cover additional site work and related testing, sewer, and electrical work. The new contract total will be in an amount of $699,261.45.
So moved.
Second.
23, approve cancellation of bid and reauthorize to advertise for bids North Tower Boiler Upgrades and Vent Replacement. The amount of funding required for the project is currently unavailable.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve change order number one for CIP 2017-013, renovation of Davis Avenue Library with Tindall Construction LLC. The change will increase the contract by $48,071.52 for plumbing repairs and unanticipated demolition of the ceiling. The new contract total will be in an amount of $717,201.52.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve sponsorship with Positive Dental Impressions Dedicated Dennis, Inc., in a total amount of $500 to be divided equally between District 1 funds in amount of $250 and District 2 funds in amount of $250 for its free Dental Day event.
So moved.
I thought we got information that they were canceling, didn't?
I think that they were planning to postpone it.
Just postpone, okay. Second. Okay, second, I'm sorry.
26, approve rescinding action in March 9, 2020, minutes, agenda item number 11, approving sponsorship with Dauphin Island Heritage and Arts Council, Inc., in the amount of $2,000 from District 3 funds for its annual Dauphin Island Native American Festival. The event has been canceled due to concerns regarding the coronavirus pandemic.
So moved.
Second.
27, approve assignment to PH&amp;J for project vehicle maintenance facilities for Camp, Camps 1, 2, and 4 for professional services, services associated with the Design, Building, and Construction Administration in a total amount of $258,227.
So moved.
Second.
28, approve contract with Assistance League of Mobile in the amount of $500 from District 2 funds for the, for assault survival kit supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Silly question, is that right, kids?
29, approve application for transfer of off-premise retail beer and table wine license for GB Operations, Inc., to Shehary Krishna, District 3.
So moved.
Second.
30, approve application and accept subsequent grant of $373,286 from the Corporation for National and Community Service for Foster Grandparent Program. The county match is $103,671, and the grant period is July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This is the second year of the three-year performance period that began July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, approve application, accept subsequent grant of $366,079.3 from the Corporation for National and Community Service for the Senior Companion Program of Mobile County. County match is $144,352, and the grant is for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This is the third year of a three-year performance period that began July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, approve conditional real estate purchase agreement with JW Properties, Inc., for the purpose of purchase of real property located at Michael Square Shopping Center, located on Zelia Road and south of Michael Boulevard, and from March 23, 2020 through January 29, 2021, and to further authorize the county commission president to execute conditional real estate purchase agreement and other such documents as are necessary related to the potential sale of said property.
So moved.
Second.
33, approve request for the Attorney General's opinion regarding if Mobile County is still responsible for the cost of transporting deceased bodies incorporated, as well as unincorporated areas of the county.
So moved.
Second.
34, consider taking the following in action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve renewal of agreement with Terminex Commercial in amount of $557 for the liquid defense system for termites for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
So moved.
Second.
36, approve renewal agreement with GoDaddy.com in the amount of $599.99 for a five-year SSL security certificate for MobileCounty.gov sites.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve lease agreement with Xerx Business Solutions Southeast in amount of $143.18 per month for 36 months from the current state of Alabama contract.
So moved.
Second.
38, recommend authorizing advertisement of requests for statements of qualifications from airport planning and engineering consultants to perform services for the next five years at the Jeremiah Denton Airport.
So moved.
Second.
39, recommend awarding bid for Project Pritchard Streets Reservicing to John G. Walton Construction Company for their low bid in the amount of $777,127.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, recommend adopting a resolution setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Number 41, recommend assigning contract for professional geotechnical design and construction engineering services for Cottage Hill Road and McFarland Road, additional lanes to Geotechnical Engineering Testing, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Number 42, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Number 43 was voted at the conference. Number 44, recommend assigning contract for professional services, for professional engineering services, Miracle Road, grade, drain, base, pave, to Speaks and Associates, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
45, consider accepting report from the county engineer pertaining to petition for the private road, dirt road maintenance for Grand Farms Road West in accord with Act 2019-307. The county commission may consider funding the preliminary engineering cost for 2,094 linear feet of qualifying roadway.
So moved.
Second.
Number 46, consider accepting report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition for private road, dirt road maintenance for Ralph Lethem. In accord with the Act 2019-307, the county commission may consider funding the preliminary engineering cost for 650 linear feet of qualifying roadway.
So moved.
Second.
47, consider accepting road report from county engineering pertaining to the petition for private road, dirt road maintenance for Glenwood Farms Drive. Upon review of the 1984 aerial photographs, it did not exist as a well-used private road in 1984, and therefore does not qualify for acceptance and should be rejected.
So moved.
Second.
48, recommend approving amendment number 2 to C E N I Agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., for project number Americans with Disabilities Act compliant curb ramps at various locations in Mobile County. The additional costs incurred by Neil Schaefer, Inc., due to the contractor not completing the project within a specified time, will be deducted from the contractor's payment. There is no increase in the total cost of the project.
So moved.
Second.
49, recommend approving final plat of Kings Branch Subdivision Phase 2, Unit 3, and accepting road rights away as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets, Kingsgate Drive West, Kingsgate Court, Meadow Lane North, and accept the roads in this subdivision for maintaining by Mobile County, together with drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept a warranty deed for the right-of-ways indicated on the, on this plat.
So moved.
Second.
Number 50, consider waiving Section 4.23 of Mobile County Subdivision Regulations and approving preliminary and final plat of resub of Lot 11 and 12 Bay Harbor. Owners are adjusting and adjourning line between two existing parcels. The Engineering Department has no objection to granting this waiver.
So moved.
Second.
Number 51, recommend awarding bid for Project Glen Way Drive, grade, drain, base, and pave to Solution Land Development LLC for the low bid in amount of $177,703.06.
So moved.
Second.
Number 52, recommend assigning contract for the professional engineering design services for three-notch Corona Road, additional lanes to Michael Baker International, Inc. This project was assigned to Burke Klempter on November 26, 2019 as an item 31/3E. However, a contract proposal was not approved by the Alabama Department of Transportation, and a contract was not executed.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner, we have two add-ons. First add-on is to approve amended infectious disease pandemic policy, and to make a declaration that the county is at Level 2.
Let's, uh, let's take just a minute. I know we have a lot of questions. Commissioner Hudson, thank you for coming back and actually had, adding a lot to this. Your, your help was tremendous. I have some issues with the pay scale, how we've got it figured out. According to this, if someone is sent home under Level 3 or 2, they get time and a half, is that correct?
It's, uh, go ahead.
Level, no.
2, how about Level 2?
The only, the only people in either level, the only employees that would get time and a half are those, and this was looked at as hazard pay, those who have to continue to interact with the public. And in Level 3 only, those who actually have to come into the office and interact with other employees. So it's, it's that public interaction that brings on this time and a half because it is hazard pay. They are putting their health at risk, where somebody who's actually working at home does not have that same level of risk.
Okay, so if we send, if we send, and please, media, don't report, we're trying to shut something down, because that is not true. But if we send staff home, are they automatically time and a half, or they stay at regular pay?
No, they're, the, the nonessential employees, everybody's regular pay, unless you're, you get hazard pay because you're dealing with the public, the first responders and people...
This is the problem, first responders is actually the problem. You've got, you've got people working the switchboards, you've got, you've got people that don't come in contact that have to be on-site. Do they fall within these parameters of time and a half?
I think, no. And, and the reason is because what we're trying to do here, and what this policy does, is it makes all employees financially whole at every level. Everybody's getting paid their salary for what they were hired to do. Now, those who are in, that have to interface with the public, who have that direct contact, get the hazard pay. Those now, in Level 3, whenever all, when all nonessential employees are sent home, they get their regular pay. The essential employees who are at home working, and which is a benefit in itself to be able to work from home, and, and, and they are working on specific tasks. So I don't, you know, who's to say they're going to be working eight-hour days? And dispatchers and other people who are not encountering the public, they're getting their regular pay. And I think that's fair. We talk about everybody having to, to, to face this crisis situation. I think the fact that the county employees get regular pay in all levels of these precautionary measures, I think that's a good thing. We're not having to lay off people, so, so everybody's getting their pay.
Commissioner, nobody's arguing that. I'm just trying to make a point here when it comes to the Sheriff's Department. That's a little bit different, in that they've got to ask people for, that, that are on the switchboards, that's very important, that they have the people there for the phone calls coming in. I think we should leave that at the sheriff's discretion, whether to pay them time and a half or not. And to say it's, it's just for the employees that come in contact, it, it, it doesn't limit us, per se. I don't think it limits us, but I think it really limits the sheriff, because people can stay at home and make full pay and not come to work on those sensitive jobs and, and make time and a half.
You know, I disagree, Commissioner. I think that if you have the benefit of working from home, you are not put in contact with other employees, you're not in contact with the public regardless, or even the dispatchers. If you're at work, dispatcher at work is encountering other employees, so that would cover that employee. If you, but in Level Three, in Level Three, if you're a dispatcher. Now, in Level Two, I think in terms of fairness, if we want to use that word, we have administrative employees who can do payroll from home, who can do other jobs from home, but I don't think at that point in a Level Two, we need to be paying everybody time and a half. I think that what it would appear to the public is that our employees, we're allowing them to profit off of this situation. And you talk about wrong, I think that's wrong.
I don't think anybody's arguing with you on that one, Commissioner. I think what I'm saying is there are some exceptions in the Sheriff's Department we've got to be sensitive of. I don't think anybody's arguing with you about paying this, I've already told you, I thought this was very good, but I think a cutout needs to be the Sheriff's Department. We need to leave the discretion up to the Sheriff as to how to run his department. He is elected official, he has a right to do that. We're not out there on a daily basis. We don't know what it takes to support these people in the field, especially through these crises. So all I'm saying is let's give the Sheriff some leniency that he can work with and work with his people.
I think that the Sheriff's Department should follow the policy in the same respect that the license revenue and the county administration does. If you have employees, if the Sheriff and by and large, I would say probably, a great percentage of the Sheriff's Department, these people are working in the field as first responders, they are working as correctional officers, they're encountering the public, they're encountering other employees. I think by that token, certainly, they would go into that time and a half category. But if they have employees that can work from home, just like our county administration employees, if they can do that, then I think they should get straight salary. They're getting what we're promised, and they're not putting themselves at risk. We're not giving this latitude to any other department or any other department head, and I think that we should not make a special exception in this case.
You can't feel phone calls from the public at home. That's impossible to do. So we're asking these men and women to come in, to man these phones.
And they get time and a half for it. If they are coming into work, they get time and a half. If they are working at home and they do not have to come into work, they do not have to go into the field, they are straight salary. That's the way it should work. So I think the confusion here is the understanding that the people who work for the Sheriff's Department, and why we've singled them out, because I know the Sheriff has emailed and asked for all of his employees to get this time and a half, but that doesn't work across the board. We can't make a special exception. When he has employees, if he can assign them to work from home, and you can answer the phone at home in some cases, but if those, the employees that have to be on the job, that have to be fulfilling their responsibilities, and it requires them to come into contact with other employees or with the public, they would get the time and a half. That is hazard pay.
Commissioner Ludgood, you got anything you want to add?
No, I agree with Commissioner Hudson.
All right.
Is this included exempt and not exempt employees too?
Who would you consider exempt?
Directors. Directors. Not me, legal staff, I'm sure there are other people...
We're not paying you anymore.
Not me, I'm talking to... There are other employees that are exempt.
Unless there are... Right. Unless there are reasons, I think that we may need to look at that further. You know, I mean, there's a lot of layers to this onion, you know, trying to figure out the best way possible to move forward and to keep everybody, as I said, whole. And it may have, we'll have to look at that. At this point in time, it's how it's written, and that would include everybody. But I think unless we see a reason, and there are things that we may not quite fully understand in this process as we move forward, that we may have to adjust. But...
Okay.
Commissioner Carl, Commissioner, would you permit a comment?
Sure.
Certainly.
Come down, Judge, we all can hear you.
In regards to this proposed policy, when members of the probate court administration and I met with members of county administration this past Friday, we understood that part of our role as an appointing authority, a department head, however you want to characterize it, was that we needed to identify those aspects of probate court's operations that were essential, and those aspects of our operation that were not essential. And not identify, so that's the process that we have been endeavoring to do, starting Friday and continuing through today, is to identify what is essential in terms of our operations and what's not essential. And then, once we do that, we understood the next process would be for us to identify what employees are capable of providing those essential services, the ones that we've identified. And if, once we identify, it may be more than one employee that can identify, that can serve that essential function. And then, in terms of staffing that essential function, we understood that you could rotate who is providing that essential function and spread it amongst those qualified to address that function. I want to make certain I'm understanding, I don't want to, I hope I'm not getting too deep into the weeds with this, but I wanted to see, is that, did we understand, are we approaching this the correct way or not? Because I think whether you have essential functions and essential employee, those are two different things, as I see it. One's apples and one's oranges, in a sense.
Right.
And I hope I'm making some kind of sense to you in what I'm trying to convey.
Well, I think your approach, I think as far as sharing those responsibilities, I don't think there's a problem in the world with that, and it's probably a very good idea, but I think during, you may have to keep track of the times that the employees are coming to work.
Of course.
And they get the hazard pay versus those who don't. I mean, so it's an administrative function to keep track of.
Oh, definitely, we understand that. But to kind of give you an example, under the Supreme Court directives, we are to remain open and deal with mental health and voluntary commitment matters, and also emergency guardianship, conservatorship matters. Those are things that we, that's an essential function in the judicial part of our operation. You contrast that to adoption proceedings. Adoptions are, while they're important, they're not an essential part of our operation right now, that we have to stay open to address through the Judicial Division of the Court. And so that's, those are the kinds of distinct differences I'm seeing and what we're, how we're trying to approach this. I just want to make certain that we're doing in the correct manner, and I would just say that essential functions is different from essential personnel. And again, I hope I'm, something here is resonating.
It makes sense to me, and what you're explaining is what I think we all are doing, or supposed to be doing.
Right.
That's the way I understand it. What you, the formulation you just made is what I understood it to be.
Okay.
Well, you have to know what your essential responsibilities are to know who you're going to assign to those responsibilities. So you're on the right track, it sounds like to me.
Not everybody's qualified to provide all of our essential functions. And we might be able to move people around to share the essential function.
I think that certainly, I don't see why that couldn't be allowable. That makes sense.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing me in quite.
Thank you, Judge.
All right.
There were, there's one amendment to the amendment here I would like to make, and this is the very last sentence. It says, "The Mobile County Commission will," I would like to add, "at its discretion, declare a change in precautionary status method of employee compensation." I would like to add that because at some point, there may have to be a method change in compensation, or an end to the state of emergency as it relates to the infectious disease pandemic outbreak. So it just adds some flexibility there.
So move as amended.
And one thing I would like to add, there are a few typographical errors and that I've found, and I'm not going to go over each, it's like replacing as with are and that sort of thing, you know? But I'd like to include those before this is released to the public, but it's nothing substantive, it's just words here and there that maybe have been left in from the previous policy.
We'll get with you on that.
Okay. I'll second that.
Number two, approve the request to waive the entry fee for cycling at Chick's Abode Park and boat launch fee at River Delta Park, starting immediately.
So moved.
Quick question. Are we staffing this park?
All the parks are staffed. We have just cut out camping and a lot of the activities that interface with the public. These two things, we're waiving the fees so that our staff that's there right now does not have to interact with these. Someone wanting to cycle could just come through and cycle, wouldn't have to interact to pay the fee. And the same thing at the boat launch at River Delta, they could just come in and launch a boat and would not have to interact.
But we're still, we're not going to let people swim and camp?
No, sir, we're not.
Well, I'm in agreement with waiving these fees.
Second.
Okay.
Number fifty-three, commission announcements and/or comments.
Tom, you got anything else?
Yes, I do. I just want to announce, the Mobile County Recycling Center has announced that it will be closed until further notice. I know their donation centers are remaining open, and I think it's, they have limited hours there from ten to six. So I know that's bad news for a lot of people who, like myself, plan to go this week, but unfortunately, they're a victim of this crisis as well. But hopefully, the things will begin to get back to normal. If we see a flattening of this curve, that seems to be what we're all talking about these days. If we can get this thing under control, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. I know most operations and activities have ended, a lot of, some of our surrounding states have actually begun closing businesses. And so hopefully, we will see some medical evidence in the very near future that things have gotten under control and we can return to normal. We can only hope and pray that be the case.
Real quickly, I've been kind of heading up a one-man committee for the county, trying to get a handle on the direction that we, as the county and city, we have identified several sites. I had mentioned, I think, in our previous meeting that we can actually do some testing sites. We've identified, I think, fifteen. I think we're limited, we're very limited what we can do as far as the test kits. We spent all day Friday on phones, there was about seven, I was working seven different phones, trying to come up with test kits. I think we have done that. It'll be around, hopefully, don't hold anybody to it, by April the first, we should get a pretty good influx of test kits so we can get the cycle going. We have so much to be thankful for, and I really encourage you to reach out to some of the elderly that are homebound. You don't have to go see them. My grandchildren aren't coming to see me because the children seem to be the carriers and the spreaders, and people like myself and Commissioner Matranga up there, we're too old, we don't need to, we don't need to get exposed to this. But reach out to these elderly people. If you can help them in some way with a loaf of bread or, how about just a thirty-minute conversation over the phone? Please do. Just let's, let's don't forget the people that are shut in and used to having somebody come to see them every now and then through this. We are, we have got some great things on the horizon, and like I said earlier, we're Americans and we're tough and we'll rebound as long as we do it together. We can't do it separated. With that said, we do have some retirees in April. Horace Cooper, the Sheriff's Department, thirty-one years. Esther Johnson, Administration, twenty-one years. Karen Nelson, Revenue Department, twenty years. Estelle Porter, License Commission, I hope I got that right, Nick, twelve years. Daniel Reed, Sheriff's Department, seventeen years. And Aura Williams, Administration, thirty-two years. And we wish these folks a happy retirement. That's all I've got, Glenn.
I would also add that I know there are a number of testing sites that have opened. I think as of today, Mobile Infirmary has a testing site drive-through that's by appointment only, and there is an urgent care clinic. I think it might behoove us if we can help get information out about what's existing right now, and maybe how people can access what's currently available and what steps they need to take. So that would be, I think, a benefit to the public to help coordinate that information. Dean, I'm looking at you, if you will help us get that information together and help us get it out there. Thank you.
Commissioner, we have an indigent care board afterwards.
Excuse me. You want to close this other one first?
Yes. Number fifty-four, approve request for motion to adjourn until April thirteenth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I called to order the Mobile County Indigent Care Board meeting, March the twenty-third, 2020.
Number one, approve amendments of the meeting of February twenty-sixth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept a report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the indigent care fund at February twenty-ninth, 2020. Funds available, $161,228.33.
So moved.
Second.
And number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Everyone be careful. Have a great week.